Call the meeting to order. Let's please rise for the flag salute.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Mayor Jakola?
Here.
Council President Steinhebel?
Here.
Councillor Dykstra?
Here.
Councillor Mann?
Here.
Councillor Savage?
Here.
Councillor Ulfers?
Here.
Councillor Workman?
Here.
Going to the consent calendar, the following items are considered routine and would be acted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions on these items unless councillors so request. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda, March 13th, 2024. Appointments for the Budget Committee, Senior and Disability Service Advisory Committee, Approval to Award, Beaton Lane and Tennessee Road Railroad, RRFB Pedestrian Crossing Signal, geez, it's a mouthful. Board Minutes from the Library Advisory Committee, December 12th, 2023. Parks Trails or Parks Trees Trails Committee, October 18th, 2023. Planning Commission, November 15th, 2023. Senior and Disability Service Advisory Committee, October 18th, 2023. Council Meetings, February 14th, 2024, Regular Session. Liquor License Sam Place on Sherman, Full On Premise New Outlet. And last one is Local Government Grant, Authorizing to Apply for Local Government Grant From the OPRD and Authorizing the City Manager to Sign All Appropriate Documents. Is there a motion?
No, for approval.
Second. Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Okay, we'll move into presentations. First tonight, we got Crossroads Community Executive Director Michael Couch.
Mayor, City Council, pleasure to be here again. I wanted to take the opportunity to, for those of you who are not familiar, to introduce you to Crossroads Communities. I think most folks here are familiar with us by now, but you never know. We are a nonprofit based here in Lebanon. Our focus is helping others do good well. We provide a wide variety of services ourselves and we connect those in need to services that are already offered. We try very hard not to reinvent the wheel. It allows us to keep our administrative overhead low and do the most good with the money that we have. So one of the things that Crossroads Community does, we collaborate with counties, cities, other nonprofit organizations, the state itself, to be able to address the needs of the houseless, the underhoused and those at risk for houselessness, as well as the what are considered the working poor. We advise property developers on how best to provide supportive housing. That is to say, housing for those in need that also takes into consideration the fact that they may be unstable, i.e. they may not be as employed as they'd like to be, they may be on a limited income, they may suffer from food insecurities, and our objective is to help developers plan for that. The more we are able to stabilize people, the easier it is for them to be able to maintain their housing, the less likely they are to become homeless. So we champion construction of affordable housing for rural Oregon. For those of you who have not yet visited, Applegate Landing is a 48-unit affordable housing complex. It opened August 30th, almost three years ago now. And the focus there, those 48 units are receiving regular services, care and support from Crossroads Communities. I have staff there Monday through Friday, soon to be extending into Saturday. We offer a wide variety of programs to help provide people with their activities of daily life, be able to assist them with things like transportation, food nutrition support, rental assistance, energy assistance. And again, a lot of those come from program partners who may have offices two or three cities away. They can get those services directly through us so they don't have to worry about heading over to Albany or up to Salem. Our main focus is to host and coordinate services. If you've ever been inside our service center pictured here, you will see a mental health room, a physical health room and a gathering area. The reasoning being if we can bring services to clients, then we don't have to send them elsewhere. We have a wide variety of projects currently going in Lebanon. We have the onsite and advocacy stabilization services at Applegate Landing. As of May 2023, we purchased a 21-unit apartment complex. We have 22 units, one of which is our office. One is for one of our onsite staff members who's there around the clock, and the rest are for people who need housing. Those folks are generally considered the harder to serve. Those are people who've been chronically homeless, people that have severe and persistent mental illness, and our job is to be able to make sure that not only are they housed, but that they're able to stay housed. We work very closely with IHN and we work very closely with Lynn County Mental Health to make sure those people's needs are met. We have a Lebanon Community Services Center. We are in the process of bringing to Lebanon. We've already secured $1.75 million of federal funds for that. Our initial goal is to reach $5.5 million. Ultimately, we'd like to be able to do a lot of upgrades to what we're looking at, so it'll be closer to $10 million. I know you guys don't see me a lot because I'm not normally here asking for much. I'm happy to say that we've done that without having to come to the city for assistance. And we want to be able to maintain that type of relationship where we can add to what the city has to offer without requiring it to come out of your operating budget. We are proud to announce that we've been awarded the Why Can Youth Workforce Education Funds through Williamit Workforce Partnership, allowing us to help young individuals in Lebanon aged 16 through 24 learn marketable job skills they'll be paid to learn, and then we get to assist with connecting them to an employer. We have an ADA compliant transport van service. We're able to use that for everything ranging from medical appointments that are changed at the last minute to getting someone to the Eugene Airport, which we have done. We also run regular trips to Safeway and Walmart for individuals of our housing complexes that may not have accurate transportation. Public transportation is great, but not when you have six grocery bags. Last year, we assisted eight different counties by distributing 2,060 space heaters. Technically, we've done 2,038 because we still have some left. If you know anybody that needs them, please let us know. We have additional programs. We have free and reduced dental care services for low-income households throughout Lynn County. We have upcoming a domestic well water program to educate people who own their own well or who are renting from someone who owns their own well. That will also include free testing for low-income families. We are doing community emergency preparedness classes. We're partnering with Lynn County for that. For the domestic well water program, we're partnering with OSU and Samaritan Health Services assisting us with disease prevention and living with chronic diseases. So why am I here tonight? We are dedicated to working with program partners, including the city of Lebanon, to address the housing needs of rural Oregon communities. Lebanon does have a need for housing, and we want to advocate for all housing. In fact, that's a program that we are working on now. But we are focused heavily on affordable housing because not a lot of people do it. It's not as profitable, and since it's less likely to make a profit, less people want to invest in it. So we are focused more on the end goal of getting people housed and seeing people not on the street. And this is not a worry about a fiscal return on investment. We're not looking to make a profit. Unfortunately, affordable housing is affordable for everybody except those who run it and those who develop it. So there are certain expenses that we accrue that, most of them are unavoidable. However, I would like to look for opportunities where we can reduce some of those expenses, which is the reason why we are here. We do have a request for you to consider, and there are current Oregon statutes that allow nonprofits who operate affordable housing complexes to waive the need to pay property taxes. So the statutes have been adopted by Lynn County. However, cities are required to opt in. I've already verified with Lynn County Assessor's Office that Lebanon has not opted into that. And we are requesting the city review these statutes as a benefit of the community outweigh the costs perceived and fiscal of adopting them. So that is to note, if you adopt these statutes, then Crossroads Communities and other nonprofit organizations that own and operate multi-unit dwellings would not have to pay property taxes on that. The statutes in question are OR 307 541, specifically related to nonprofit corporation ownership of low-income housing, and OR 308 701, which provides clarification on what that entails. So we are based out of Lebanon. We formed in Lebanon. We are located in Lebanon. I spent my formative years in Lebanon. This is still very much home. Allowing nonprofit organizations to save the money they would have otherwise paid in taxes allows them to put that right back into the vulnerable members of the community. We have shown time and time again that the money that we utilize is well-used to best effect, and the programs that we operate of Applegate Landing and our Milton Street Apartments, Cascade cottages, have a profound and important impact on the community. And if you allow us to not have to pay property taxes, we get to reinvest that right back into our programs. So our goal is to change lives, not to make money, so we can do more if you let us keep those tax dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you know any other cities around us that have adopted this?
My understanding is all the surrounding cities, Albany being the largest one, have already adopted it. They are a little bit ahead when it comes to affordable housing, simply because they have nonprofits that are able to take advantage of the operations without paying property tax.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I guess. Normally, take two here. I'm not good at algebra, but I'm good at math. It says perceived and fiscal costs. How do we, just kind of give me an idea how we get that money back?
What I would look at normally if I'm giving a full presentation, I want this one to be brief. We have what's called a social impact calculator. It's provided by the Life Fund, which is an organization that's a think tank of three Ivy League colleges that say, "The services provided by this social service provider will save the community X number of dollars." So if you take a look, for example, at Applegate Landing, the total cost of building that site, 48 units, and the cost of operating it for 30 years will be about $70 million. The total cost to the community is well over $300, or the savings to the community is well over $300 million. That's because people who have safe and affordable housing and children who have stable housing are able to grow up to get better jobs, less likely to be involved in crime, are less likely to have to rely on other social services or the healthcare industry. If you take a look at the average person who's homeless, the only time they engage with the medical industry is if they have to go into ER. And that is far more expensive than something like urgent care or having a family practitioner. So by providing people with stable housing and providing the wraparound support services, we have job creation programs, life skills training, stability services, food nutrition support. It saves the community far more on police expenses, medical, infrastructure, having to rouse people out of the park. So the idea being that by making a small cost on income, we would have a much better increase on what we're saving the community.
Do you have a number or a close guess as to how many nonprofits this would affect in Lebanon?
From my understanding out of the research I did, that would be two. Crossroads Communities and the organization that operates Colonia Pass.
Okay.
I'd be interested in a staff report on this, just to see what we're looking at in terms, what this would cost in terms of property taxes to the city, and then the verification of how many nonprofits that it would affect in Lebanon, if that's something we can request from staff.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions?
I assume, I know this right. Once we did this, it would be for anybody. Anybody could come here and take advantage of that same thing if they were a nonprofit, correct?
Yes.
Just making sure.
So that would encourage the additional construction of affordable housing, and that is something that Lebanon needs. Our goal ultimately would be to introduce more affordable housing to Lebanon. Again, our focus is having the wraparound services to assist people with stabilizing and then turning them into more productive members of society, rather than being the working poor or barely making ends meet. We get them living wage jobs, which then allows them to purchase a home, and the money they make goes right back into taxes.
Well, thank you for your presentation today. I look forward to receiving the staff report.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Parks Trees and Trails Committee.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rick Barnett. I am the current Chair of the Parks Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, and I thought, why don't I say the purpose, but the name says the purpose. Parks Trees and Trails Advisory Committee. We help city staff, we show as a, we are a forum to discuss issues related to any of those three areas. We have people that have expertise in Build Lebanon Trails, who Rod's going to be speaking in a minute about some things they're working on, people from the Strawberry Festival, a neighbor and advocate for the skate park, somebody, a member that has interest in historical preservation, and some people with expertise in park operations and maintenance and urban forestry. So it's a good mix of people that are able to, just, they can bounce things off. We can discuss some and go from there, and it works really well that way. Some current initiatives is give input and support to currently funded improvements at Cheetah Lake Park. You're working on some, got some money to do some things there. It's already in the hopper. Just give, work as a sounding board on that. Support the city's current effort to obtain state local government recreational grant funding, and I'm pleased that that was on the consent calendar, that you're going to do that. Just a piece of information is typically, there's about $12 million available throughout the state. This time, I want to say $32 million. So it's a very good time for Lebanon to try to get that grant, and they've done. You've got some granting from there before as well. And then the third current initiative is provide a forum to discuss Build Lebanon Trails and Strawberry Festival plans and initiatives that they have going. So those are the things we're working on right now. There's, as things come up, from, you know, tree issues or whatever it is, we try to be helpful in that regard. Any questions for me, and then I'll turn it over to Rod Sell with Build Lebanon Trails to update you on what they're doing. That's how I like it. No questions. Okay.
All right. It's working, right? Yeah, got it.
Yes.
So thank you all and for allowing me to bring the excitement about our trail system to you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Rod Sell. I'm the Board President for Build Lebanon Trails. Most of you know me. And so Build Lebanon Trails has been around for a while, and we have some really exciting things to talk to you about tonight. Really, we've been working for 19 years to reach, we're almost the finish line on creating a fully accessible trail system that is off-street, that runs all the way from the south of our community to the north of our community. So Build Lebanon Trails has been working for 19 years to make this a reality, and we are one trail away from making that happen. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about several of the trail projects that we currently have going. But I want you to be aware of what we're calling the Georgia Pacific Mill Race Trail. So a couple of our board members have been working directly with George Pacific to try to secure a greenway that's identified as Trail Number Four in the Trails Master Plan, and that's in your packet, just to highlight that it's in the Trails Master Plan. And what that is, it was created, it's called the Mill Race because it was created many, many years ago when the use of water for power was needed at the mills that are in the industrial area out by LBCC. So that Mill Race was created, a wooden dam was across the South Saniam River, down below the current Grand Street Bridge that fed that. And then after the dam was put in upstream, that Mill Race was abandoned. It's set abandoned now for many, many years. So as of the 12th of December, George Pacific, after telling us that if we did, if we got it all surveyed, got it pinned, and then got it all recorded, that they would donate that greenway, that space to us, of which we're going to put a trail on. And the pictures that are in your packet, and if we can move a couple of the slides up just to take a look at that. Someone's been taking care of that property for us and doing a really great job. And when you take a look at it, it's this wide greenway that's a perfect place for a trail. What this one trail does is it connects our community from, all the way from Cheetah Lake South, all the way to the north of our community, to Bromile, East Isabella, Dodge Street neighborhoods. That's like three blocks away from the library. That means the whole north side of town, the part of town that's never had an access to the trail system. Now is going to be able to access this trail to go all the way, miles and miles of public trail to go all the way to Cheetah Lake. So we wanted to let you know that the Parks Trees and Trails Committee has reviewed the Trails Master Plan and is in supportive of us moving forward with the project. What we intend to do is to use the model that we used for the old mill trail, which is, we retain ownership of the property. We work with the city to come up with the design spans, plans and specifications, and we build that to city specifications. What we've been able to do, and it's a proven method for us to save one quarter to a half of the cost of the trail and build it in the same year that we started. We actually saved one to two years in making that available to the community. So we're really excited about that. We just started our fundraising for that. We have one event per year. It's called the Cheetah Lake Fun Run Kids Obstacle Dash. It's out at Cheetah Lake. It's on May 4th this year. 100% of our efforts for funding and 100% of the proceeds from that event now is going directly towards the building of this trail. We've had an estimated construction cost, initial estimate at $350,000. We're contracting with Udell Engineering on this and several projects that I'll be talking about quickly to come up with a design plan, and we've, that's going to be our main focus now to move forward and to get, to make this trail a reality. We're applying in several different areas for funding, and we will be doing, really, we just started our main public outreach for that. One of the areas we're asking for funding is from the Lebanon Tourism Committee. And I know that you've been hearing about that fund recently. What we've done is we're asking for more than we've ever asked for before from that fund, from the Lebanon Tourism Committee. And so we're asking for $25,000 to help us get some seed money for this project. And talked to the Director, Rebecca, and frankly, she's a little concerned there's not enough money in that fund, but to fully fund that. So probably going, you're probably going to be seeing me next month to come and see if there's an opportunity from the funding that I understand that the city controls from that fund source, to see how much of an ask we can do to make up the shortfall from what our $25,000 is and what they can give us. So that's just kind of a heads up on that. We're super excited about the trail project, and like I said, everything we do there is through approved plans from the city, and with the goal, just like the old mill trail, of donating that property after it's partially or completely developed to the city. So along with that, I wanted to talk to you about the South Saniam Trail Connection. Again, for many years, we've been trying to get a trail right-of-way, to build a trail between the AYSO, the youth soccer field area at Cheetah Lake. And I know many of you know that that was purchased with a million-dollar grant from the Oregon State Parks with their assistance many years ago, is to connect that park in with the Cheetah Lake Park proper, where there's going to be a lot of improvements happening this year and next year at that park. So we believe, after many years of attempting, we believe we've secured the trail right-of-way across that property. It's a verbal agreement at this point. We expect to go and have that written agreement in the very near future. And the idea with that property is, again, that we will use the city standards to build that trail and keeping it as the ownership of Build Lebanon Trails for that development. And we believe we can build that yet this year, at least in a gravel based to city standards. And then our goal is to have it completely developed, but at least a gravel. And then sometime in the future, that property, we hope too, will be donated to the city. So a lot going on. So now, how about the things that we have fully funded? And that's the Gil's Landing Connector Trail. This project, we identified as a need because the current trail that's there goes underneath the railroad trestle and heads right to the boat ramp. That trail is in very poor condition and needs to be replaced. And so it also directs all the trail users right to the boat ramp, right where the boats are backed in and out. And so we saw an opportunity to make several ADA accessible improvements with this project, one being that we're realigning that trail and making it align more with the current bathrooms to provide an ADA parking stall on the west parking lot and a new trail connection right next to it. And then that trail will go, continue to be expanded because there's no existing trail right now on the south side of the parking lot where the bathrooms are. And we're going to connect in along a curve line directly into the existing old mill trail. So the vision is a fully accessible, continuous-flowing trail system that is about trail users, about people that are walking. So the other improvements to that are, one is the current ADA RV site at Gil's Landing is failing. And this project will completely rebuild that up to ADA standards again and provide direct access to the trail system from that parking spot. But also, of course, striping improvements, but this trail's going to be built in concrete with reinforced fiber concrete, so we're building it to last for many, many years. There's two pedestrian crossings, and both those pedestrian crossings are going to be raised three inches above the asphalt so that they, to act as a very small bumper, like speed bump, but really to identify where the trail users are going to be and to protect them while letting the traffic know that they got to slow down while they're crossing there. So we were able to do this, raise all these funds privately. And we're doing a really good job of doing that to fund the projects. But I just wanted to take just a second to tell you where that money's coming from. So over the years, Build Lebanon Trails, a lot of it comes from savings of the old mill trail, for one example, because we were able to save almost $200,000 on that project for future trail development. So we're using that to build more trails. But also, so Build Lebanon Trails, the Heatherington Foundation, again, who helped fund the old mill trail, stepped up, gave us an award on that. The Ford Family Foundation, that actually funded, back in 2009, funded the Resources for Rural Environments, the Rare Intern, that developed our trails plan that I'm referring to, these maps out of, that are actually in that trails plan. And also the Lebanon Tourism Committee. So just to backtrack just a little bit, there is a map that identifies the South Shore, Cheetah Lake, South Shore Trail Phase Two, that's in your packet, and that identifies where that trail to the soccer field is going to go. And it's amazing, that was created in 2009, and that footprint is almost exactly where we're proposing to build it today. So that's some really good planning that happened way back when. But that's not all that's going on. BLT applied for a grant, and the city was awarded a grant to expand the trail system at River Park. It's happening this year. The city's going out to bid for that. And that will include extending the West River Trail, that's the trail that goes along the river, to the west boundary, park boundary. And that trail's going to continue along the west boundary line to connect in with an existing trail that's in the park to create a 3,600-foot-long loop all the way around the park. And trail loops are just super, super popular because it brings the people out and they get their exercise in one spot. But the other thing that does is that is the connection, and it's in the drawings, in the designs. That's where we're connecting in for the Georgia Pacific Trail. So if you can see the vision now, we have all this property and it's all ready to be built to that trail system, that we believe we're going to be able to raise the funds for the Georgia Pacific Trail and have that built in 2025. So we're talking about the near future for all of these great developments. So that's not all BLT does. And I think what I failed to tell you is we're full partners with the city. The city gets to approve all of our projects. We use the city standards. On the George Pacific Trail, it includes a walk bridge. The walk bridge that we're proposing to use is the same walk bridge design that was used on the three bridges that are at the boat ramp area at Cheetah Lake. They're made by Rick Franklin Corporation. They're made out of railroad cars, and they're just, they're super good walk bridges or bridges, and he sells them all over the United States. So we're really lucky and fortunate to have that in our community. And the plan is to put that trail across. And I'd love to take you all out there, to show you the projects and take you on a tour of anything. Or to go ride our bikes on the trail. on a tour of, of anything, or to go ride our bikes on the trail. And, but I wanted to close in that, that isn't all that BLT is doing. BLT is really here for the long term and we're proving that in, in several ways. One is we, we're, we're providing, starting this fiscal year, $20,000 a year for four years to fund a seasonal trail maintenance worker. That's, that's been, that's already started this year and we right away saw the difference in the trail maintenance. The quality of the trail maintenance has gone up considerably and we're hoping to fund that longer than that. But right now we've had, got a letter of agreement with the city to fund that for four years. So along with that, we do a lot of regular, regular trail maintenance. We do daily trail maintenance, we do weekly trail maintenance, we do monthly trail maintenance and we have many trail workdays where we encourage the public to come, help us maintain the trails and get that sweat equity and that ownership of the trail system. And that popularity has, has really been increasing. But we do a lot more than that. We have five quick response graffiti removal teams. And the challenge that, that we challenge everybody is to go out on our trails and see if you find graffiti. And we're hoping you don't, but if you do, let us know within 24 hours, we'll have that gone. And that's the way it's been since we started the, the graffiti removal team. They're called the wipeouts and they do a great job of that. So please accept my challenge to go out and, and see how wonderful our trail system is. And one of the reasons is because of the things you don't see. You don't see the graffiti, you don't see the, the graffiti writers getting the rewards for their, for seeing more of their, of their creativity because it's gone within 24 hours. So we do little things also, like at Cheetah Lake, we have a project that we're partnering with the city to recreate a, a loop trail on the end of the, of what we call the third finger at Cheetah Lake. We're, we're buying all the materials, we're providing the physical labor and the city's providing the trucks and the equipment to do that. Couple hour job probably, but it really, we're enhancing the trail system. Another way we're doing that is we've planted over 360 trees along the trail system so far. We just had a, a workday to replace some, some vandalized trees that, on the Old Mill Trail. We actually went out and, and replaced those, but also put in some new trees. But how do you maintain those trees? Every summer Thursday that the temperature's over 80, when it's, we start when the temperature gets over 80 degrees, we have a crew that goes out and waters every one of those trees that's three years and younger. It's a dedicated group every Thursday during the summer. And we have, you know, we want to go out and recreate during the summer. Well, they think that's recreation, so they take their five gallon bucket and, and the winner of the person that attends that the most, the water brigade, is they get their name on the bucket. That's, that's their reward. So, you know, along, along with that, we're doing things like we created a, a maintenance endowment fund. So back in, in 2022, we started a, a, a fund, we're calling the Maintenance Endowment Fund, with our goal of fully funding that endowment fund to the point where it's capped and, and all of the, the revenues from that fund go to the city for, for trail maintenance. So that's, that's a high priority goal for us. So on the end of the, of the paperwork and submitted is, is a list of our, our goals. I'm not going to go over those with you. Luckily, we've already completed a bunch of those goals, but every year we get together and create, and do a goal setting session where we, we set our one to 10 year goals. And thankfully, we're reaching all of those goals. And, and so just to cover those, some of those quickly, our plans are to, we want to fully build out that Burkhardt Crick Trail System. So you can imagine a, a loop trail system that goes all the way around our community. Burkhardt Crick is there, there's a lot of right of way that, that's already there that needs to be converted to a trail right of way. But I, I think that's one of the easiest things we're going to do as far as building a trail system. We also want to complete the trail around Cheetah Lake with this South Shore Trail Improvement. We're, we're one section closer. There's only a, I think there's three sections to do and, and we're all the way around that lake. Again, a loop trail system around the lake is going to bring a lot more people into our community to experience our trail system. This connection to, to the north end of town is going to be huge for the, for the popularity and the draw to our community. And, and our trails are really getting known outside of our community. So another goal is to fully fund that trail endowment fund. And so again, that, that's a high priority. So in, in closing, in, in, in the packet is a, a map of the existing trails, but also there's solid yellow lines and dotted yellow lines on that map. Our goal is to make all of those dotted yellow lines solid lines, which means we've completed the task. Build Lebanon Trails then at that time, we'll morph more into trail maintenance because we'll have the trails built. So we, we, our goals really are to complete the trail system as designed through the adopted Lebanon Strategic Trails Plan. So thank you. I know that was, might've been a little long, but I'd be glad to take any of you out at any time to show you the trails, to show you where the Georgia Pacific Mill Race Trail is and to just to show you all the people that are out there because it's really, it's really well used. Thank you.
Thanks Rod. Just for me, thanks for letting me serve as a advisor on the Parks, Trees and Trails Committee. It's been a pleasure. We are, we're really lucky to have you, your passion and your devotion to this. And we have a trail system that a lot of towns bigger than us would be jealous to have. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thi, I want to thank the Parks, Trees and Trails Committee for all the work you guys do. And thank you to Build Lebanon Trails. I know you guys have been putting in work for so many years and I think the, the benefit you've provided to our community, you can't put a value on. I, I appreciate your work.
Thank you for your support.
Any, any other questions from council? I would like to say thank you and I'll see you on the 4th, May 4th.
Great, yes. Thank you, looking forward to that.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move into public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking. You hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to council. The council may take additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. City recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. So I have three tonight. So you have five minutes. So let's just remember the rules here. When it's green, you're, you're good. When it's, I think it's one minute, turns a yellow. When it turns red, you're, you need to be, need to be done, but sometimes I let it go a little longer. We'll see. First up tonight is Derek LeBlanc. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Hey Mayor, St. Temple. My name is Derek LeBlanc. I'm president of the Kid's Safe Foundation.
Turn your microphone on.
Can you hear me now? Let's try that again. So my name is Derek LeBlanc. I'm president of the Kid's Safe Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) based in Eugene, and so we teach firearm safety and accident prevention to kids. And so I'm here tonight because I'm asking for your permission and blessing to be able to blow up one of our inflatable BB gun ranges at an event during the, the strawberry festival to outreach to the local kids, to make sure they understand the importance of safety. And it's a way for us to kind of get our, our name in the community to, to reach every kid that needs this important lesson. And so since our founding back in 2016, we've reached over 29,000 kids now in five states and taught them these life-saving skills. And we would look, we would love the opportunity to be able to present, you know, what we do. And I, I put together a little, a little packet, info packet here, which has, you know, a, a top view of the inflatable BB gun range in question. It's completely self-contained. Everything's safety, 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 and it's paramount for us. And so the kids, when they show up, there's a way for us to network, network with the kids. We, we talk to the parents about proper storage of firearms, if they have firearms inside the home. And then we also do a safety brief with the children with, on the four basic safety rules. And then we get to actually, they step inside the range with trained instructors and they actually get to shoot BB guns. And, and so I was looking at your, your ordinances here, and so that's kind of why I'm here, is to obviously ask for permission. So we, we have approval from the city council and law enforcement that it's okay for us to, to shoot these BB guns inside the city limits. You know, everything's contained, you know, we're properly insured. We have up to $2 million with the coverage that would cover us in any example for liability reasons. And this is a, a great opportunity for us to get the kids of your community involved in, in, in safety and safety disciplines. And it's, it's our goal as an organization to create, you know, responsibility, you know, safety and discipline through the use of these ranges and to showcase that, you know, guns, if used appropriately and properly, there's nothing to be afraid of. And we can start the kids at a young age and, and get them involved in a, in a responsible manner. And so I'm, you know, asking for your, your blessing to be able to do that, be able to bring in, everything's self-contained. There, we'll leave no trace, you know, we'll pick up everything. And it's, it's just a really fun way for us to outreach to the local community. So I, I'm, I'm welcome to take any questions that you guys may have.
You're wanting to set this up at the Strawberry Festival?
Well, we're, we're setting up an event with Oregon Indoor Shooting Range. They're going to be kind of our partner here. And so what we'd like to do is, and I put in, in my, my application, I put a little di, not necessarily diagram, but kind of my thought process on where we would blow this up. It'd be in there, there's some parking spaces that are alongside the sidewalk there between, I believe Ash, it's on Ash Street between South Main and I believe is it the second or third street? It's, it's part of my application. But it's, it's, you know, it's not in, in any way on a main thoroughfare.
I have that here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I just had one copy. But everything, everything's there. So everything will be, you know, coned off, we, we provide the cones and...
So it's not going to be out by the rides at the fair?
No, no. And it's just, just because we want to be able to control and we want to be able to prevent, you know, acts, un, you know, access and, and make sure we can have the kids in and out in a, in a timely fashion.
Where have you, where have you guys set this up and used it before?
Um, all over the, I, I actually was in San Diego last, you know, two weeks ago. And so we traveled all over the west coast. We've done it in Washington. There's typically a, a circuit that we travel for sportsman shows where, you know, that's, we've reached over 21,000 kids through these BB gun ranges because we're able to blow them up. It's quote unquote, like a bounce house. And that's the easiest way for me to kind of explain what it is, but it gives us the opportunity that we can set it up anywhere. I've set it up on the lake shores. I've set it anywhere that I have power, I, I can bring generators, I can plug in a generator and run it. And it just gives us a, a great opportunity to outreach to the public.
So, so I was just going to ask, is this something that requires a change in code or is there waivers that we can do for events? What, what's the process?
So our municipal code doesn't allow for shooting inside city limits, but I think through an event permit with this, which is what you filled out and the police chief's blessing on it, and it goes through Public Works and us to look at your location and whatnot. I don't, that's, that's the route that you're taking, that you, we suggested you take. So I don't believe it takes a council action for this. I, I think it's, it's something we can do on an event permit and get you, get you going in the right direction.
Okay, great.
I think that ordinance refers more to firearms than BB guns.
It's kind of loosely worded.
It's, that's why he's here.
Yeah.
So, so this is, this is a pretty common ordinance. It's, I've, I've dealt with this in other small towns. Harrisburg being one of them, we're in front of the, I went in front of the city council. And that's why I wanted to kind of come in front of you guys tonight is, is to be able to, you know, get it on the record, let you know that there's, and, and bring awareness to our cause and our mission. You know, our, our mission and our mantra is zero firearm accidents is the only acceptable goal. And so until we get to zero, we're going to continue to work and part of the work is coming into your community, make sure your kids are safe.
All righty. So it would just be going through the regular process, making sure you have the insurance?
Yes.
Liability and what?
Okay. Yeah, and we appreciate you coming in and, and asking that question instead of just doing it. So yeah.
Is there any other questions or comments from council? Hey, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Carrie Anne Lane.
Hi, I'm Carrie Anne Lane. I own a salon called The Beauty Temple. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the merchants of our downtown.
Turn your microphone on, please.
Just get closer.
Sorry, I'm Carrie Anne Lane. I own a salon called The Beauty Temple, which is inside the Old Town Mall in our downtown. And I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the merchants of our downtown who are asking for the farmer's market to be moved from the city parking lot to Ralston Park. So if you've been in Lebanon for a while, you know that our downtown hasn't always been as busy and thriving as it is now. When the farmer's market was brought to the city parking lot, it was a great way to bridge the gap between the community and our small businesses in our town. Since then though, both our downtown and the farmer's market have grown exponentially. The relationship is no longer beneficial between the two of them. The Main Street Organization recently conducted a survey, which I think we had 99 people who participated and the number one complaint was our lack of parking. When I've talked to other merchants downtown, the parking comes up as an issue as well as safety. Taking away one of our main downtown parking lots is, is a pretty big hindrance. Many of the downtown businesses find that they get so little business on Thursdays during the farmer's market because there's so many people coming and going to the farmer's market that it kind of attracts away from their businesses. Some of them choosing not to be open on Thursdays even. For myself, we actually have to give our clients a disclaimer that if you have a Thursday appointment, you need to allow for extra time to find parking and to get to and from your appointment. This isn't that big of a deal if you're an able-bodied person, but many of our clients are elderly or they have families with little kids and that can be a challenge. Last summer, I was alerted to the safety issue. There is a small parking lot outside the back of my, the building that I'm in and a private lot to the left. It gets very chaotic and there's many pedestrians going in and out of the parking spaces as well as vehicles coming in both ends of that alleyway. When I was locking up the building at the end of my workday, somebody almost backed into my six-year-old daughter just because there was so much going on, they didn't see her. Luckily, nobody was injured, but we were all pretty shaken up. So the parking issue as well as safety seemed to be the biggest complaints. When I think of my ideal farmer's market experience, it is not a hot parking lot. Moving over the park would be a much more of an ideal experience for our community as a whole. The greenery, the shade, the access to public bathrooms, as well as the ample street parking, even if we had some of that overflow into the city parking, I don't think we would find that it would hinder our downtown businesses the way that it does now. And if it was more of an enjoyable experience and people weren't just coming and going quickly to the farmer's market, we would find more people spending time at the market as well as downtown. So I think I fleshed out all of my biggest points for our argument. We have collected in the last week about 70 signatures from people signing this petition to move the farmer's market. Is there any questions that I can answer or concerns?
Just, so I'm, are you talking about moving it to Ralston Park?
Excuse me?
Are you talking about moving it to Ralston Park?
Yes.
Yeah, they did that once before.
Yeah, I just would be concerned that people still park in that spot, in that parking place? Because at one time I thought I heard about, talking about moving it to Academy Square, maybe?
There was talk, the parking over there is no better.
I understand. But wouldn't, it wouldn't, because I, I agree, I walk through there all the time and it's, it's kind of grown out the space, outgrown the space it has.
Yes.
So I get it. It does disrupt the business and there's a lot more business down there to do now. So I hear you.
Who's in charge of the Lebanon Farmer's Market?
Uh, I'd have to look into that. I know her name, but I can't think of it off the top of my head.
Can't either, because they brought this to my attention last year, right before the market started and wasn't really much you could do, it was all scheduled. So...
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in having a discussion on this and seeing if we can get all the parties involved.
Yeah, and we, we can talk to them about that. What I, the only thing I would caution is, is if, if we're not going to allow the closure of the lot for the farmer's market, we're going to be really careful because other business, other, other events like to use that as well. So I don't want to get into a situation where we say no farmer's market, but the next guy that comes over wants to have an event in that parking lot, we say yes.
It's often used, it's an often used location for events. So if you stop one...
I think the solution would be to stop.
You're, you're going to be on a slippery slope with the others as well.
Well, the farmer's market's a regular event.
Yes.
And these, these, you're talking, these are more like one timer, a, a once a year event.
Well, there's some recurring ones. I mean, they're back every year, they're not every week.
I know there's been closures for like Ash Street in the past and I've had complaints on that.
Yeah. We closed Street, Sherman, Ash.
Sherman is another one, yeah.
We can definitely get ahold of them and see if they'd be willing to move. I, I don't know if their agreement's been, I think their agreement's been signed for this year to use the lot, but let me, let me check into that real quick. But let me, let me check into that real quick.
Yeah, they start next month.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next up, Shelley Jacola. Make sure your, make sure your mic's on.
Is it on? Okay. I'm Shelley Jacola, and I'm with the Downtown Association. And I was just coming to give an update since we did our presentation in January. I am now the Executive Director of the Downtown Association. We have a new executive board. So we are in compliance with the Oregon Main Street by having an employee now. The things that we have been working on since then is the design committee is doing senior banners down Main Street for the high school seniors. And we have sold 40 of those, but we got nine of them sponsored by local businesses and community members to help some kids that didn't quite have the funds to pay for that. We are working on getting flower pots with flowers down Main Street by the benches to the design committee is. And we're still working on our murals. We have, one art board has just went up, and we have, I think, two more that should be going up within the next month. And we are starting to work on our Community Cleanup Day in May. The Promotions Committee is working on the concerts in the park, movies in the parks again, and our first Friday. And we are wanting to bring back Noon in the Plaza, for Strawberry Plaza this summer. Economic Vitality has just started to work on doing quarterly roundtable meetings, discussions with local merchants, and they're going to kind of break it up to like restaurants one quarter and like the boutiques or retail shops and so on to see what the need is for them to, that we can help them out with to get their businesses more profitable. Outreach is working on sponsorship packets, and we've handed some of them out and getting some sponsors in for our projects. We have also assisted with some of the city grants that were just given out. And I'm working with somebody else, two other people on grants for Diamond in the Rough for the Oregon Parks and Rec Grants. And we have just started work, working with Western Comp for Welcome Week when their students come in and doing the Tools of the Trade medical bags, which is kind of fun. It's kind of nice getting to know what's going on with the college. Our monthly newsletters are still going out, and we're working on the Spotlight Businesses of the Week, which has been a lot of fun. And the businesses say that it has definitely like improved business the week following the spotlight. So that's all we're working on right now. So I didn't know if you guys had any questions or wanted to know anything else that's going on in the downtown. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks. Carrie Anne Lane, can you bring up the petitions that you, you had signed? And you can hand them to Julie here, the city recorder? Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. We'll move into regular session. The first item on the list is Chamber of Commerce funding request, and Ron will be giving us a report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Back in February, you guys got a presentation from the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce President, Rebecca Grizzle, who is here tonight. She brought in new updated plans for their building that was hit back in June of last year, their proposed plans. And what they're going to do is part of the Tourism Center and whatnot. At that meeting, there was a request from the chamber to help support this project. That request was $100,000. One of the things that the city council had asked is what we receive yearly in tourism funds. In fiscal year '23, we received $289,000. Excuse me. Get a little interest on that, and then obviously we added to that fund balance. So what does that go to? $42,000 goes to the Visitor's Center, obviously to the chamber, and who runs our Visitor's Center. Tourism grants, $43,000. And then we go on down to the Downtown Association, who gets $30,000 of that. And then the city uses $50,000 for the building restoration program. You can see that leaves about $125,000 in unallocated funds right now. So again, the chamber's requesting $100,000 for the renovation. Per their request, they have also got some other stuff being paid for with a T-Mobile grant. And they'll serve, looking at serving on Saturdays during the Strawberry Festival to help us out with tourism. So options for the council to consider tonight would be to fund the full amount at $100,000. Or they've also asked Lynn County to, for, for funds as well. We could match that, whatever Lynn County's match was. I'll leave that to the council. In addition to the approval, in fact, I think we heard it tonight, we don't have a current policy in place for different businesses, organizations asking for tourism funds. And we should likely put a policy in place, how much, who, before we move too much further. Not necessarily right now, but as we, as we move through the future, and so that makes these decisions a little bit easier. So with that, I would ask that basically discuss what you would like to do. Give us some direction on the use of the tourism funds and potential for a future policy. And ask any questions.
One thing I didn't think of was matching what county did. What number is that?
I believe 70,000?
How much?
70,000.
70,000? Okay, so at least we have a number to talk about.
Is this a, is this a one-time impact? I mean...
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, did you take the money and hand it to them? You don't stretch it out over a period of time?
We, we had that same question last month, and Jerry was asking, you know, how, how fast, how much do we get? How quickly does it reload? And that, this is like an annual amount that we're getting, this 200 and some, as I understand it.
289. That's what it was last year.
I was referring more to the cost, what we'd have to, how would we, how would we hand over the money? Would we hand, I don't know how long this project's going to take. Do we, is that all this year's budget? Is it next year's? Does it have a chance to refill?
Well, I think, I think we would just, we would, we would give the money this year.
Okay.
Right, so.
Just making sure.
And then beginning next fiscal year, we would continue to collect tourism funds and build that fund back.
And the next fiscal year's in about four months?
Yes.
I don't know. I kind of miss the 1950s DMV feel, though. Got used to that. Since they're already doing the work on the thing.
I'm still in favor of doing the 100. You know, I think there's some, there could be discussion, obviously, on doing the 70 in Matching County, but this is our chamber and this is our home, and I'm happy to chip in the extra 30 for this, understanding how much the fund refills every, every year with the tourism funds or with the transient lodging tax, excuse me. I do think that we need a policy. I think that was a really good staff recommendation. Thank you, Ron. In the past, I know we've had, or whoever, who wrote this, I don't know. In the past, I know we've had similar requests, smaller, obviously. But I can think of like off the top of my head, Guitars Under the Stars came and asked this body for extra funding when they were not able to get it from the chamber, and I think we just need something for the future. But I'm happy still to support the 100 today.
As am I.
I agree. Me too.
Me too.
The, going forward, and like I said, I'm not great at algebra, but it's, it's hard to measure what the impact of these things are. I fully support our chamber. I think they're doing a great job. But if somebody presents us, part of that policy should be, how do we measure? You say heads in beds or whatever. What's, what's?
What's your ROI on it?
Pardon?
What's your ROI on it? Return on your investment?
Yeah, yeah, there needs to be some kind of measure. I don't, I can't say I know how to do that. Maybe Brandon or somebody smarter than me does. But we make these decisions, we put a policy in place, we want to make sure it profits us. I mean, it's obvious we, we need to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be a little bit tough to, to quantify that. I mean, I think, I think you're looking at tourism. What is it, what is, what are those impacts? I mean, you know, you got people going to restaurants, you got people using our parks, you got people shopping our businesses. I don't know quite how to quantify that.
It's probably more qualitative over the quantitative in that respect.
I'm willing to bet if we asked the chamber, they could come up with a number on how much each head that lays in a bed ends up spending on an average 48 hours here. Because that's what chambers do, to drive economic growth.
We just heard a presentation from the Parks and Trails that they're, they're going to ask for some of that money. Are we going to have enough?
What do we have left over at?
25.
25?
Yeah, if you hand, if you hand out the 100,000 tonight, then you have 25,000 left over.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we get refilled to some extent.
Well, it grows as people stay.
Next fiscal year, we would anticipate additional revenue in the form of transient occupancy taxes again.
Brandon, did we spend the balance of that fund last year?
We did not. We did the, the items that are listed in your memo, but we didn't, we didn't do anything else beyond that.
Where did the balance go?
It stays in the fund balance.
Okay.
It rolls over from year to year. The city has continuously budgeted it in case we have a project that pops up that meets a need. But otherwise, it sits in, in the fund balance.
Okay. Sits and draws no interest. Oh, excuse me, 0.1.
It gets 5.2%, 5.2% is the current interest earnings.
Can I throw some of mine in there? I think 5.2.
So do you need a motion to approve the?
No, I don't think we necessarily need a motion. We weren't asking for a motion. Do you want a motion for this?
On the, on the allocation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Since it's city funds, we need to.
Gotcha.
Well, I would just like to say that I'm glad Michelle said what she said, because that's, that's what I was going to say, is that it is our, our chamber. That, you know, we should be updating it. It's been needing to be updated, even though it was an accident that started the whole process, but it's been needed to be updated for quite a few years. And maybe this is the time where we do have the additional funds in there that we, we invest back into this community and, and make the chamber more presentable. Is that a fair, fair word it's used? So if there, if a motion is needed, is there a motion to, for this funding request?
I move to approve.
Second.
So a motion's been made to approve for the full 100,000. Is that correct? Dave?
That's your motion?
Correct, correct. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
400,000, it's been second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed.
I guess that means Mary's not going to have to have her office back in the supply room anymore?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trey's not here to celebrate.
Well, I know, I know we talked about this last month, but I think it's important to point out that this money that we're pulling this from and giving to the chamber is, only can be used for tourism.
Correct.
So I think, like, for those who are watching this, it's important to know. We're not just throwing 100,000 here and 100,000 there.
Exactly. It, it's going to the, the proper, proper...
To be used for tourism of some sort.
Tourism, and it also regenerates or gets reloaded every year.
Yeah.
So. And the fiscal year starts when, Brandon?
July 1.
The what?
The fiscal year starts?
Yeah.
July 1.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody out, out there knows that the fiscal year starts July 1. So if you're listening online and you're wondering if it's the end of the year or when, July 1. So that's the only reason I did that. Okay, so the, did you need any more information on policy suggestions?
No, I think we'll, we'll develop a policy and bring it back, just so that we have something, something there. We'll, we'll get to that.
Michelle, did you have something?
I was going to ask the same question. I didn't know if you guys had enough direction from us.
Okay.
No, we, we think we should have a policy, and we'll, we'll come up with something. And it may take us a couple of meetings to, to figure that out, but we can, I mean, we can bounce the ideas back and forth and figure out what we need.
Alrighty, thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Private Sewer Lateral Replacement Program Policy and Guideline Update for Resolution Number 2024-03. Ron?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. What you have before you here is an update to our sewer lateral program by resolution. Very simple update. When the program was developed in 2008, basically, this program replaces sewer laterals, private sewer laterals for single-family residences from the sewer main to their home. The caveat to this is that the program pays for everything, all the work done in the right of way. So we pay for that, homeowner's responsible, but they, they have to do it at the same time. That was the plan. So what we used to do was the homeowner would write a check for the full amount, and they would come into our office, and we would have a check in our hand for the amount to, that we were going to pay in the contractor, and we'd trade checks. Since then, we've found a much cleaner way to do that, which is the homeowner basically just goes under contract with the contractor that's doing the job. They still apply the same way. We're not changing money like we were and having to make, felt like backdoor meetings, you know, where we're changing checks. So that's really the gist of what the, what the resolution is for. I can answer any questions about the program or what we're, what we're trying to accomplish with it.
Questions? I take it everybody read their packet this time. That's good. That's good.
My mom had to do this several years back. I wish I'd known it was still.
So if there's no questions of staff, will the city, the city attorney's out tonight, sick? So the city manager will read the title of the resolution.
Alright, Resolution Number 2024-03. A Resolution, Appealing Resolution Number 2008-11 in approving the Private Sewer Lateral Replacement Assistant Program Update Policy and Guidelines.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve this update, and it's been second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the next item. Lebanon Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04 Regular Meeting Update. Ron?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We are proposing to update, as you said, Lebanon Municipal, huh, can't talk. Lebanon Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, which is our regular meetings. Current chapter basically says that our, our second Wednesday at 6:00 PM for our first meeting, which I'm going to get this right. And then noon session when needed for, actually a noon session at our, at the fourth Wednesday of the month. So during our last few council meetings, it's been apparent that we're having trouble meeting, you know, people are meeting these, these meeting times. So what we're proposing to do is that council could come in and specify the time and date of the second city council meeting, gives the ability to set the times and, and notice it. Those, that's really the only change, rather than just stipulating what, what that second meeting looks like. You guys would do it normally. So like for tonight, we would, we would say, hey, we're going to have the meeting next week, which we already have on the schedule, but we would schedule out from there and make sure that that's okay with council. So that's, that's that. Let me know if you've got questions or if you want to make changes to that.
I like it.
I like it too. I just want to say thank you. I know I've brought this up a couple of times, so.
Yes, this was Julie's idea, and it was a good idea.
As long as they're all at noon.
It's not just me, just so we're clear.
I had no issues, so anyhow. There's no other questions of staff? It sounds like we're ready to, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Step back or step back. City, uh, city manager, please read the ordinance. Title of the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill Number 2024-01, Ordinance Number 317. A Bill for an Ordinance Amending Section 2.04.060 of the Lebanon Municipal Code.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed. So we're heading on to department reports. Again, Ron?
Okay, last but not least, I won't go through the whole thing here, just probably half of it. No, I'm just kidding. So a couple of things that aren't in the report. We had some of our public works staff attend the Oregon, Oregon Association of Water Utilities last week. At that, we were presented with Operator of the Year. Our Tyson Keen, our water treatment plant operator, was issued that, so kudos to him. And I think we won some awards for best tasting water and some other things along that nature. So it was good for Lebanon. Secondly, we have a meeting next week, noon council session. That was going to be a utilities update and also talk about the potential... a utilities update, um, and also talk about the potential for, uh, council chamber relocation. We are going to change the topic of that meeting and talk specifically about the five-year budget projection, namely the general fund, um, lay that out for you, give you some, some information to chew on, uh, come back in April with an additional work session as we're moving into the budget season and getting everybody prepared for that. Short of that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
So that's gonna be a lot of fun, the next meeting?
Yes, I expect that that will be more fun than we should have.
It'll be a hoot. Be prepared to strap your boots on really tight and, and go for a good ride. Bring a seatbelt for your chair. Is there any other questions? Or comments? Okay, items from council?
I just wanted to give, um, council an update that, uh, sorry, on Monday, March 25th, from 2:00 to 3:00, that, uh, a representative from the governor's office will be visiting, um, Twin Seaters Mobile Home, um, Park, to see if, just to learn more about their situation and see if there's anything that they can do, so, um, I assume anyone can also attend, I know I will be there.
What was the time I missed the time?
It was 2:00 to 3:00 on Monday, March 25th.
Not noon?
No, not noon. So.
March 20, 25th, you said?
Correct.
At what time?
2:00 to 3:00.
2:00 to 3:00, okay.
And I don't know, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know, uh, and I can't put it in an email, so here it is, an open session for you all. That's all I have.
Uh, any other items from council? I don't know if we beat the last city council meeting, this one's pretty, pretty quick. If there's no other items from council, uh, is there any other additional public comments? Press? Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Belcher, do not leave, I want to talk to you right after this, so.